Let's call the City of Milton, virtual Common Council meeting to order on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
At Piggly Wiggly, Hometown East Hardware and Milton City Hall.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries and we have an agenda. And we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind Inga. And we can say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. I think number four will be controversial. And there may be several objections, but we'll work through them. It is discussion, debate, plotfulness, agree to disagree, impossible action regarding a resolution honoring Director of Public Works Howard Robinson for his leadership and dedicated service to the City of Milton for probably before I was born. I don't know. It could be that long.
This, this would just be the first reading though. None of that waving stuff.
You know, Bill, you're right that how we will have to come back to two more city council meetings and you know, thank you for bringing that up. And we will tie his last paycheck, his future attendance.
I've been to enough meetings that I know a resolution is once.
He's so smart.
Nicely done, Howie.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there might be edits. You know, we may have to go back and.
Review it.
Review it, make some changes, add some footage. I'm going to read it really slowly so how we can savor this moment. And, and this is recorded so he can play it time and time again. And so can we, when you're not here anymore.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Resolution 2021-22. And I'm going to try not to cry. How are you trying not to cry too? Whereas Howard Robinson began his career in 1981 with the city of Janesville and has served the city of Milton since 1989. As first the Assistant Director of Public Works, followed by Director of Public Works. And whereas Director Robinson was instrumental in coordinating countless development projects that created a more workable, sustainable and livable community. And whereas Director Robinson's commitment to creating, expanding and preserving parks, open spaces and the natural beauty of the city of Milton has been and will be enjoyed by countless generations. And whereas his role as the Director of Public Works contributed to the betterment of Milton for all its community members by leaving a legacy of positive change. Among them, the establishment of the Community Garden, the new Public Works facility and countless park improvements. And whereas Director Robinson dedicated his professional career towards making the city of Milton a better place to live, work and play, not only for his own family, but for the entire community and did so with pride, honesty and integrity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Milton, Wisconsin, hereby honors and thanks soon to be former Director of Public Works, Howard Robinson, for 31 years of dedicated service to the city of Milton. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council wish to present former Director of Public Works Howard Robinson with a plaque commemorating his service and commitment. And do we need a motion to approve this or did you want to debate it a little bit? And edit wordsmith for 20 or 30 minutes?
It would require a motion.
Do you want to edit? 32 years.
Oh, alright, well, alright, then you're gonna have to come back.
Until Friday, right?
Oh, I guess not, yeah. 31 and 362 days.
Yeah.
I, I make a motion to approve it based off of that suggestion for change.
And Linda, did you second that?
Yes.
And should we do a roll call vote?
I think we should.
Let's do a roll call.
It could be close, could be close.
It could be close. It's controversial. I was planning on spending several hours on this one. So Jenny, can you just go around to each council member and take their vote?
Bruce?
Approve.
Welch?
Do I have to vote too?
Well, if you, no, technically.
On this one?
And this one. As long as I'm not going to get myself removed from office, I approve.
Holberg?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Okay, and Wilson?
Well, I abstain from strong drink, but I'll vote yes on this resolution.
I think I have everybody.
So are you saying it passed Jenny? Is that what, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it has passed.
It has passed. And so it is.
And it's on a six zero roll call, but the mayor was included, so seven.
Well, well, thank you. You've put up with me for a long time.
Yep, and we've set aside a speech time for you after team building, which you will be able to abstain from, but you will not be able to leave the meeting. So you must stay till the end of the meeting. Are we clear, Howie? I don't think I've ever told you to do anything, but tonight is the last night. I'm going to tell you what to do.
There you go.
My computer's broke.
We're sending someone over to help you then.
Alright.
Okay, congratulations, Howie. We're very sad to see you leave, but we're going to put you on a lot of commissions and you're forever a member of parks, so.
And he's taught all of us a lot of things about the city of Milton.
Yep, and Linda, if you read your team building instructions for tonight, you will save your words for that.
Yes.
Okay. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And I know that Jenny had reached out and said that there were some township members that may be wishing to speak and they're free to speak at this time or wait till later in the agenda. So I'll just, Jenny, let you ask them if anyone wants to speak right now.
Jeff, did you want to go first?
No, go ahead, Tully. That's fine.
Unfortunately, I thought you guys were actually meeting at your city hall, so I left, I put some maps over there.
I, I did take pictures of them and I have them available electronically. So if you want me to bring them up, I can.
That's up to you. I just wanted to say, just for a minute, I've spent a fair amount of time on this one myself. Tim Tolleson, I'm the clerk for the Town of Harmony. I live on Kennedy Road here in Milton. I spent a fair amount of time in this process. You probably like the view of my dog better, but okay. I spent a fair amount of time on this and between working with Chief Pickering and working with my chairman, Jeff Clens, we've probably run a dozen or better scenarios. And this is long before the city of Milton wanted to express an interest to come in on this. And every time we ran a scenario, it kept coming back. And I'm not just talking monetarily. It kept coming back. The best scenario is if the city of Milton joined into the four townships. And again, monetarily, it works very well for the townships. But honestly, the maps kind of show what type of coverage putting a team like this together would, would give the city of Milton, Towns of Harmony, Lima, Johnstown, Town of Milton. It's tremendous coverage. And I just want to say, I know we've, we've run into a few speed bumps here in the route in the last few days here last week. You're always going to run into speed bumps. They're unfortunate. But with the time that everyone has put into this, I just want to say that I truly believe this is the best scenario for all of our residents, city of Milton, all of the townships. It, it gives them tremendous coverage. In the future, if we go ahead with a Newville station as a central station, it just adds into that coverage, into that timeframe of response time. And really, that's what our residents care about. All of the feedback we've gotten from the residents in Harmony is, I want a fire truck or an ambulance at my house. The second I call, tell me how much it costs later. Everything was about response. So I truly do believe if you dig into this and look at those maps, you'll see that this is truly the best scenario that we found. And we've worked, like I said, a dozen of them for all of our residents. So let's, let's get over the speed bump and keep rolling. That's it.
Tim, do you want me to bring the maps up so you could explain what they are?
If you can. Did they come out okay?
Um, I think so, but um, we'll, we'll leave that up to the, up to all of you to judge, I guess, right? Um, one second here. Can you see that photo okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So on this one, we ran the scenario and Jeff and I ran this past the 911 center. And they came up with this response time map. And this was having the east station as it's planned out there at the corner of 59 and High Street. And this is one of the scenarios we picked of where Milton, the city of Milton, might put a station, and this was on the corner of High and John Paul. But you look at the response time that's covered here, that middle timeframe is a five minute and under response time. The next darker one is seven, the next one is nine. You can see it gives tremendous coverage. And when you look at Lima and Johnstown, they no longer have to call a day ahead of time to reserve a, a fire truck for the next day to fight a fire there. They, they actually have response times in their townships. And it also covers much of the Town of Milton, the lower sections. And Harmony gets covered very well. And the city of Milton is all in that five minute area. And the other map currently shows what the station on Madison Street currently covers. And I don't know if you can get that one up, Inga.
I can. I thought it did come up. So just one second, let me.
Yep, nope, that was just.
Make sure I'm doing it right. No, that's fine. Um, this one. This one, right?
Yep, that's it. That's the current station and the coverage with the, I guess, light green or gray thing, the five minute, the next color green being a seven minute and the darker gray being a nine minute response. So you can see it, it really improves that coverage and, and honestly, I, I do think people will look back in 20 years and say, they built something pretty damn good here. We've got coverage. We, we get responses. And that's really what I think it boils down to. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for putting it together so people could look at it and see it visually. That's helpful for everyone.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those maps and I appreciate you attending our meeting and all the work that you all have put into this, all the months and months of meetings that you dedicated yourselves to. And does Chairman Clens want to go next? And then you just have to go.
There we go. For you though, people who might not know me, my name is Jeff Clens. I'm the town chairman for the Town of Harmony. I want to thank you for allowing me to, to take a few minutes just to speak tonight, reference the future of our fire EMS service. In the past, the Town of Harmony has simply gotten a bill. We paid the bill and we excellent fire service from the city of Milton, the Town of Milton Fire Department. Things have changed, of course, with the rest of the world, I guess, costs going up and, and things changing. So recently, you guys are aware that the township had come up with some type of an idea in regards to fire service. Either go with the city of Janesville completely or with you guys completely by ourselves or several different options, like Tully has said, we've looked at it, seems like a million of them. I, I can't believe how many times we've had meetings and conferences and phone calls between myself and Tully and Lima Township, Johnstownship, Milton Township, City of Janesville, Edgerton Fire Department. It's just been, well, let's just say my part-time job has become a full-time job, it seems like. So again, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I guess my, my main reason is I know that there has been some hard, hard times in the past between the Town of Milton and the city of Milton. And I know there's been some bumps in, in the road just recently. I, I reached out to Al and spoke with him just recently and hopefully made my point across as I'm going to try to make tonight. Speaking for Harmony Township, we certainly want this to work. I, from the very beginning, even before, thought that the best way that we could protect our citizens, not only in Harmony, but also in the other townships and the city, would be that we all join together and start afresh and come up with something that's going to be 30 to 50 year plan, in my opinion. I think Chief Pickering had some excellent ideas for the future. And I really think that if we, you know, pull up our boots and work together, we can come up with something that we'll all be proud of and that we won't have to worry about future generations of Milton Tonians, if that's the proper term. So basically, I just, I want you to know that Harmony Township, and then I've also spoken with Lima and, and Johnstown and feel confident that I can speak for them, that they too want this to work and believe that this would be our best option for everybody. So again, thank you for the, the amount of time and let's, let's do this. Let's consider everything that's happened in the past, water over the dam and start fresh and make this thing work. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
So I just want to thank you Chairman Clens for attending the meeting and taking the time to speak with our council. And I believe I can speak for our council, but I also, you know, will let them make comments if they wish. We really want this to work too. And we agree with everything that you have said. We're dedicated and committed. And I do think that we are back on track. I'm confident. Nothing is 100%, but I am confident. And I think we can create something that we all will be proud of, that our residents will be proud of and will, will be taken care of with the plan that we come up with because we have shared interests. And we all know people and have friends and family that live all over Northern Rock County. And we all want them to be taken care of. And when they call for a fire or they call for a medical emergency, this is a crisis time for them and they deserve the very best that we can deliver to them. And so I, I just appreciate you all coming tonight and sharing the maps and they were helpful. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment now or if you want to wait till the agenda item. That's up to you. I guess I'll just go around real quick. Or Attorney Schrader, should we just wait for the agenda items since this is public comment?
Well, the, if you're talking about item 16, that's, that's of course closed session. So perhaps if they have something to say, then on that item, this would be the appropriate time for them to do that.
Perfect. I'll start with Bill Wilson.
I guess. I'm sorry. Okay, so you were looking to council members as opposed to the members, other members of the public? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm not aware, well, I'm not aware of any other members of the public, Jenny. I, I don't mean to be rude and cut anybody else. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Um, there is only one other person that I see that is on. And it's listed as RE company though. Would you like to speak?
I'm good. This is John Jennings.
Okay. Oh, hi, John.
Thank you, John.
And, and just.
Now we know that you appear by Zoom with the letter J. We got to know.
And just to confirm, there's no one in the waiting room right now.
Alright, thanks. So Attorney Schrader?
Okay, well, they, again, for council members, I guess you could either, they could either speak on, they get to item 17, which is back in open session. They're allowed by, by statute to comment on something raised by the public, but they're not able to take any action in reference to that.
And there's also an item 13-2 on the agenda regarding this. Right? Am I seeing that right?
I'm not sure if that's regarding this or if that's regarding the short-term issue.
I think it was regarding this in case we had any presentations, right?
Yeah, yep. Okay. It's an open-ended item to discuss fire EMS service in the city of Milton.
Okay, if that's the case, then 13 would be the best place for that.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we'll go on to the next agenda item. And as always, everybody is welcome to stay. And, and then council can make comments on item 13, and that's before we go into closed sessions, so. The next item will be approval of the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
I will second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Number seven, discussion and possible action regarding an industrial track agreement, ITA, between the city of Milton, Wisconsin and Southern Railroad LLC and Klaassen Quality Chocolates Incorporated.
So this is an industrial track agreement that the city of Milton needs to enter with Klaassen Quality Chocolates and Wisconsin Southern Railroad, which will be the operator on that line that serves the Klaassen Quality Chocolate site. This is part of the T application process. We unfortunately are still waiting for some revisions from WSOR and WATCO. So we'll, we'll have to table this item this evening. We were really hoping that we would have those items addressed by today, but Attorney Schrader reached out to them and said that, and asked the question, they weren't able to have their legal counsel review the, the latest alterations to it. So we'll have to table this item until November 16th.
Um, is there a motion to table this?
Linda? I'll make a motion to table the item until November 16th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman Incorporated to perform an update to the city water system master plan.
Uh, so this is a review of our water system with a little bit more focus on the east side industrial park because of some of the growth that's happened and is likely to occur in the future in that area. We have an existing master plan and some other work that has been done, but it was all prior to some of the substantial growth that's taken place. The work order is $9,950. It'll be billed on actual work time performed. It's not a lump sum. Any questions?
Is this, who's paying for this?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the water utility will fund this. It'll be for our water system, trivia, supply, demand, fire protection. Everything within the water system, against a little bit more specific to the east side, based on the growth that's occurred.
Any further information that the council would like from Mark E? Is there a motion? Oh, Teresa, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the work order from Baxter and Woodman for the water system master plan update.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman to perform resident project representative services for the Journey Hills subdivision. Mark, are you taking this one, Mark E?
Yeah, so this is for the Journey Hills development that was approved earlier this year. Construction will be starting, well, painting work has begun and utility installations will start here in the coming weeks. So we're going to have Baxter and Woodman perform services listed. And the estimated cost of services is $32,000. Again, it's billed as work time is performed, not a lump sum. And it will be ultimately paid for by the developer. So there will be no cost incurred by the city, other than we will, we have to pay Baxter and Woodman the contract, but then we get reimbursed, so.
Does anyone have any further information requests for Mark? Is there a motion? Larry?
I move to approve the work order for Baxter and Woodman for the Journey Hills subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman to provide TEA agreement engineering services.
Again, similar to the last work order, we would like to contract with Baxter and Woodman to provide construction administration as well as the resident project representative services. The construction administration piece is needed for this project because the rail project is a city sponsored project. So there'll be a little bit more work and the scope of the project, it's quite a bit larger. The estimated amount is $78,000. Again, it's billed as work time is performed, not a lump sum. And it is, it will be reimbursed as part of the TIP agreement.
Any requests for information, further information? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the T agreement, T agreement assistant work order.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion, direction and possible action regarding North Janesville Street speeds and potential improvements. This one is up for grabs.
Yeah, no kidding.
So I think Mark and I will kind of tag team this one. As you may recall, there was a request earlier this year to address both the speeds that are being kind of witnessed along North Janesville Street as well as the condition of the asphalted shoulder. Mark reached out to Baxter and Woodman to have them get their input on on this, on these two concerns. So this memo provided by Baxter and Woodman outlines really kind of addresses both issues in one. I think the things that are important to kind of pull out is, you know, they did an analysis of the speeds that the police department performed. And we kind of all looked at those previously, but just kind of show that there's a, you know, the speed, the posted speed limit is 30 miles an hour and the average speed is 36 based on the 18,000 cars that were kind of analyzed during the time period in which the speed device was out there. So in response to the the speeds, they provided some options or recommendations along that and how to better mitigate speeding in an area with with limited resources. And you can see in the first part of that memo, the alternatives they have install speed tables or and or install dynamic speed display signs and or reduce lane widths and or increase the speed limit and or reconstruct the roadway. And each one of those has an estimated cost associated with it. As you may recall, in our budget discussion two weeks ago, we do have in the budget the dynamic speed signs already in our budget under the capital improvement program or under the capital portion of the general fund budget. When we would or Janesville Street to be one of those locations where it would be installed. And the other options are are certainly up upper consideration, but come with, you know, some substantial costs up to and including $680,000 to reconstruct the roadway. So that is to address the speeds that are being kind of experienced on that street. The only other section that I will kind of draw folks' attention to is in regarding the shouldering issue on that road. Under item E on that, the last paragraph, it says the use of shoulders paved or otherwise is generally discouraged by the use of pedestrians. A sidewalk separated from vehicular traffic lanes would be necessary to provide proper facilities for pedestrians and the cost of that construction would be about 680,000. So based on their recommendation and DOT standards, you know, we don't want to further encourage people using the shoulder of the road when it's not a designated pedestrian path. So that kind of calls into question, you know, what's the best way to increase pedestrian safety in that area? And, you know, their recommendation would be to reconstruct the road as an urban cross section. And as we discussed a couple of weeks ago and in previous discussions, we agree that is the best approach. But coming at, coming in at $700,000 is is it would be a challenge. So we'd be looking at doing one or more of those other improvements along that that they have provided in order to address the speeds while still being able to address some of the concerns regarding the paved shoulder and potential sidewalk extension. But we do want to remain mindful that extending the sidewalk at the, if it if it is to terminate at some point not into another sidewalk, it would be encouraging folks to travel on that shoulder. So I just wanted to bring that to folks' attention. So we don't have a recommendation other than that we've already included the dynamic speed signs in the budget. But this is something certainly we can take in under advisement and potentially incorporate aspects of this into the future capital improvement program. If the council has a desire for one or more of the alternatives beyond what's already included in the budget, we can certainly address those as well. But I thought this was a very robust analysis done by a professional firm and and I think it's, you know, good information to have, not only for North Janesville Street, but also for other areas in town where we know we have similar situations. So. Mark Langer, did you want to add anything to that?
Not really. I think you really summarized it pretty well.
Great.
Did you see Larry?
I did. I'm sorry, Larry. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I I'm really glad to see that that came out in that report. All the information was very helpful. And I do agree with those speed readings, reading meters. I think that's one approach that would certainly be viable and useful. I just, I called Al earlier today and said I had to travel to a funeral in Saturday up in north central Wisconsin, northeast Wisconsin, I mean. And I went through two communities where they had put those up recently since I last traveled up there. And I found myself automatically putting my foot on the brake even though I was going to speed limit. So psychologically seeing the sign kind of does slow people down, I think. Anyway, that was my observation. The second thing I wanted to say is the reality is people are going to, including myself. So if I'm violating the law, I'm sure the chief will pull me over someday. But people are going to continue to use that, those aprons as as pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, because we're not going to be out on the road. I'm certainly not going to ride my wheelchair out on the road. But I also recognize the cost of that, of changing that to sidewalks. And I I wouldn't be comfortable recommending that kind of spending. But to address Al's comment, I, the the current sidewalk empties out into the street. So you end up in the street. At least if we extended the sidewalk into the bike, the apron, if you will, then at least people would not be in the street proper. So just something to think about. I guess we have to look at costs, of course, and everything. So I appreciate all the effort put into it. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Does anybody else want to comment on it? Linda?
I was just wondering, I know that you said that part of what we could do and is the reduce the width of the lanes. Is this road wide enough that if we reduced the width of the lanes, we would still be able to maybe put bike lanes on both sides or is the road not wide enough?
I believe that to Mark.
The the bike lanes are those can be put on the road easier than a pedestrian way in offer for walkers. People are walking and not riding a bike. There's different rules. I I recall the there's a separation distance and I don't remember what it is off the top of my head and it varies by road, it's the road design. You have to be a certain distance from the edge of the travel line for those those ways, whether it's pedestrian or bicycle. The shoulders out there are fairly wide, so that that's something that, you know, is an option that could be explored further. It would require restriping the road, which I think the cost listed in there was 20.
25?
Yeah, and and a lot of that's because you'd have to remove the existing marking, you know. There's costs associated with that, so.
Any questions or comments from anyone else? Is there?
I guess, I guess I got a good question regarding the the speed tables that were mentioned there, which appears to be a you know, reasonable kind of a cost to to consider. I guess I I haven't seen them employed in this kind of a framework before. And I generally would associate that kind of thing with relatively light traffic count. But right now, we appear to have a relatively light traffic count. So and I I don't really see that changing too terribly much. I mean, we're likely to see some development out in that direction that'll add to the traffic flow a little bit. I don't know whether, Mark, whether you've had experience with use of the speed table idea and what you think of it.
I don't personally have experience with them other than driving over them or really seeing them in different communities. I think there are some maintenance challenges with them, you know, because they are going to take some wear and tear from traffic as well as snow removal equipment.
Okay.
Again, it's an option that we could look at. I was just trying to look up some traffic counts just for reference. But yeah, that the last traffic counts in that area performed, I believe by the DOT, for about 2,000 cars per day on that street. So some of the smaller local streets would be around a couple hundred cars a day, you know. So for for reference, I guess, just trying to.
So it's maybe heavier than than we might assume.
Yeah, I think it is a little bit, but I mean, it's certainly less than it was, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
Looks like my count was right around that 2,000 a day. So it was 18,000 over eight days. So pretty close here.
Ryan?
I think long term, we should plan on reconstructing the roadway long term. And that could probably go into our long term planning because at some point that road is going to be, you know, receive heavy maintenance or be reconstructed. I know it's relatively new, but might as well plan for it to be reconstructed to be what we need it to be some other day. But I think that's something we we plan for in the future, not necessarily right away.
Yes, I wondered, did you look into the legal obligation in meeting the requirements for handicap accessibility? Do we have that obligation when it's requested?
I guess I didn't look into that specifically and I don't know that Baxter and Woodman addressed that in their memo. We can.
I think you need to at least
Yeah.
check it, check it out.
Sure.
Okay.
I think they just looked at the Department of Transportation.
Right. Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
But before we commit to anything, I think we need to at least look at into it. I don't want to be amiss in making a decision without it.
Good point.
So did you want to table this then for another meeting or what would you like to do?
Yes, I believe.
I would agree.
Yes.
And what I what I hear is is that folks are at least want to continue to have the dynamic speed signs in the budget. But that would be one alternative outlined that we would continue.
I would agree. I would agree with that, Al. Sorry, didn't mean, didn't mean.
No, that's okay. I just, from a budgetary standpoint, there's things we can address this year that the council wants to address this year. Let's let's do so, understanding that there are bigger improvements down the road.
Like Ryan said so well, yeah.
And that's already, that would be, well, the budget discussion is number 12, so. So I guess for right now, we'll just, do you want this on the November 16th agenda or is that not enough time, Mark?
We'll see what I can find out. We'll plan for that, but.
Okay. All right. Did you want to make a motion to table or do you just trust me to put it on the next agenda?
I mean, another, another, you know, possible solution that may exist because there is some city property there, but, you know, an alternative route to, you know, maybe we don't use Janesville Street, but maybe there's a route that can get to a better pedestrian way using another path.
Good to look into.
That may may exist, you know, but there's just some concern with putting the pedestrians on the traveled way. You know, the shoulder is part of the roadway, so.
I understand, but the reality is people are on it, you know. The only other alternative is to use a car.
Okay, are we good to? We'll bring this back on the 16th if we have some new information and then we can move on to number 12. Is everybody okay moving on to the budget discussion? Yes, okay.
Okay, so since we met two weeks ago, we haven't really done a lot of changes to the budget. I sent out the the new budget handout sheets earlier this week. There has been some minor changes internally, but nothing from the state as of yet. So kind of as a refresher for everybody, as the budget still stands today, we are, we have a balanced budget that will qualify for expenditure restraint and levy limits. Overall, we will see a reduction in the city's tax rate by as much as 15 and a half percent. We will only be levying $3,000 more than we did last year. And our expenses, overall expenses will be decreasing by half a percentage. So the budget is in, it still is in great shape. You know, the only really outstanding issues left at this point is to finalize the capital list and await any final numbers that trickle in from the state. We have started to get equalized value or levies from our from our overlying taxing jurisdictions. We've got the school district and I believe Blackhawk Technical College. So we're still awaiting the county. Once we have that, our overall mill rate in the city of Milton would be established once we adopt our budget formally. But there hasn't been really that many changes and the changes that we've had have all been nominal, but in the positive to to the city's budget. Based on the discussion that we had last week with Fire Command Staff, we have refined that number and I believe Jeremy Parker, Chief Parker had sent out some information to the Fire Commission and in the towns based on denoting their allocation based on the the number that would be allowed by the state in terms of levy exemption for joint fire departments. So that number has been integrated into our budget as well. But other than that, there hasn't been a whole lot of change. We're still on pace to have the budget public hearing on November 16th. And then adoption either the 23rd or 30th, depending on what the council chooses. But once we kind of have those numbers finalized from the state, which we probably should probably should have all the numbers in by November 16th. The last thing will be just any kind of discussion we want to have internally about operations or allocations, capital, nonprofits, things of that nature, so. Are there any questions that have come up since last time we talked that anybody wants to address or any any major revelations on how we can fund our entire CIP?
On. And how it stands right now, we have the the nonprofits at 10, 10 and 5.
Yeah, level funding from the previous years other than the Fourth of July. Fourth of July's requested increases in there. Certainly that can be level funded as well. Their their increase was nominal, so it was easily absorbed into the budget, so.
Anyone have any questions or comments on the budget?
Linda? The budget that you're referencing from Chief Park Deputy Chief Parker is that the was that the information that we were given on Tuesday?
Tuesday as in today or Tuesday as in last week?
Tuesday as in last week.
No, no, we that those numbers have been updated to reflect the 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 actual CIP or that at least the estimated CIP at this point. As well as the allocations for the municipalities. And I thought Chief Chief Parker's intent was to send out information yesterday. But I think he ended up sending it out this morning. I thought I saw.
There's an email from Chief Parker, Bill.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't get one.
You were on the list, Linda.
Yeah, you were on the list.
All right.
I didn't get one either. Sorry.
You know what? Maybe not. Don't do it now, but restart your computers because we had some technical difficulties with emails coming and going and sending. So maybe there's an update you all need to do.
If not, I can always send it out to.
Right.
What what was what was discussed and agreed upon? I mean, i- i- in in short, the number that was presented to the Fire Commission last week was off by about $2,000. So we're not talking major changes or or major disruptions in allocations, but they were able to restore the the fourth position while making some adjustments to some IT related items. And Chief Parker outlined it in his email. And if I can, I can track down that email and forward it out to the council as well.
Yeah, and he reduced the hours of that fourth position from 56 to 40. Which, you know, we didn't know was an option to do. So that was really helpful to like the staff came with some some good options. Anything else? Anything further on the budget before we go to number 13? All right, we're moving on to number 13 now. Discussion, direction, and possible action regarding fire and EMS service in the city of Milton. I know that there were probably some council folks that wanted to maybe make some comments after hearing from Chairman Clance and Clark, is it Clark Talison?
Yes.
Clark Talison from the Town of Harmony. So I'm I'm just gonna go around Bill. Do you want to start us off?
I just want to thank both Chairman Clance and and Clerk Talison for their efforts. You know, there have been times when I just really was dismayed in terms of what we might end up with. And I I just want to say I'm very, very comfortable with the decision that seems to be unfolding here. I think we're stronger together and I really applaud Town of Harmony for acting as our marriage counselor in some ways kind of being a voice of reason that that's coming through. So thanks so much.
No, just again, to thank both for bringing that to our meeting and sharing out that we really appreciate it.
Nothing really to add, Bill. It was already said.
Oh, did you say me?
I said, Linda. I'm sorry. You're speechless. Okay, we'll pass you.
Um, I'm I'm very happy that everybody is working together on this. I'm happy that I'm happy that Jeff and Tim and John are all here at our meeting and I'm I'm confident that we're all going to get through this and and that we're going to work together. We're all thinking of our citizens and the responsibilities that we have in our community. And I know Harmony was given a lot that you know, that they had the biggest change out of all of the municipalities. And I'm sure that that was tough to handle and to you know, to have just dropped on your lap. But I think that, you know, I'm happy that that we've all come together and and I think that you guys have done a great job with the information that you've been able to share with us too. And I thank you for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say change is difficult to implement as always. But when we when groups cooperate, when individual organizations cooperate to make that change happen, it usually, and in this case, I'm very much convinced will be a better long term solution for the community at large, for the citizens and for the people that need the services. And I think for the department as well, the the men and women who serve our community. So I'm excited about it. I would, I was kind of there two years ago already with some kind of a larger merged kind of organization. But we had to go through the steps we went through. So I appreciate everybody's patience and tolerance as we work through it.
I think a lot of really productive conversations have taken place over the last few days. A lot more time and thought and kind of reconstructing and reviewing and and a lot of listening and different perspectives. And I do think that we I think we're on the right track. I think there is a renewed spirit of collaboration of wanting to continue to have any conversations or any concerns brought to the whole, have a convening of the whole of everybody that's you know, we're all in it, right? We're all we're all one part. It's not the towns and plus the city. It's all of us. We're going to move forward as one collaborative group, I believe. So that's exciting. It's exciting. And I I just want to say again, like you know, the city hasn't been in all the talks and all the meetings that have taken place with all the towns over the months. You know, we had our own separate consultant and and meetings and due diligence and thoughtfulness. And we took different paths to get to the same place. But each path was worthy of taking on behalf of our our residents. And I think we're all looking forward to continue to work and, you know, really move this along and stay on track, stay on on efficient schedule. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
And I have worked you and Al into my email thing. So you will be on all the emails. Sorry about that.
It's okay. You are forgiven. I didn't die of a heart attack. I may have hyperventilated a lot. But it's all good. We understand that happens.
Just by way of update, as I kind of let the council know last week, you know, this is likely going to change from day to day. By way of update, as of 3:45 this afternoon, I met with Chief Pickering at three o'clock or at two o'clock today. And then he has organized a meeting between Attorney Schrader, the town's attorney for Monday afternoon to talk about some revisions to the the joint petition and joint IGA that came out of the discussion that Mayor Welch had with Chairman Meyer over the weekend. So that is that is scheduled for next week, Monday. The petition that will be will be kind of revised or edited was the one that was sent to all of you two weeks ago that Attorney Allrich had put together. And there'll be some slight modifications to it. And then our our hope, depending on how things work out with that discussion with towns is that we'll kind of stay on the same schedule that we had previously discussed with potential approval from our body in December, and then the petition being presented to the Edgerton Fire Commission in in January. But that timeline is fluid, certainly not set in stone, but that was the discussion I had with Chief Pickering today. And then we'll also be talking about a potential needs assessment or facilities assessment for the West Side Milton Station here in the next couple of weeks. And you might see something on our agenda on November 16th about that as well. So we're moving moving down that path kind of back where we were two weeks ago, when the town's attorney had drafted that joint IGA and joint petition with our attorney. Things kind of fell apart with that for a little bit, but we're back now. So it's good. We're in a good place.
Yeah, I think we are in a good place. And any any needs, facility needs, presentations, or anything that would be taking place on what we now refer to as a West Side Station? We would certainly invite all the towns to attend that. And of course, you're always welcome to attend our meetings. Speak at our meetings, participate. We welcome you here. So and if there's anything that comes up that we think might be of interest to you at our council meeting, as Al had said, you know, we'll let you let you have a heads up on that.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. We're moving right along. A bump in the road here or there is expected, but I think we've paved the way. Paved the way. Who is mayor? Who? Okay, Chairman Clance.
I just want to thank, thank you all for for doing this tonight. And off offer the same courtesy of any meetings that we have, you're more than welcome to attend in regards to anything to do with anything far as Harmony is concerned. But especially anything to do with the fire. I'd also like to thank just quickly Mr. Schroder for his work with our attorney in getting this thing going. So again, everybody, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then, you know, maybe next summer, we'll just all have a big pig roast or something together. I mean, I really do think all of us deserve a party when this is said and done. I hope we're all here to celebrate.
Yeah, just for information, one of my supervisors just built a nice in ground pool. Maybe I can convince him to have the party there.
We'll put that on our agenda, November 17. We can all pass that resolution at the same time for a pool party in Harmony Township.
There you go. I guarantee I won't be in a swimming suit though, so you'll be all right.
Bringing my COVID body as is, right?
Thanks again, folks. Have a good night.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, general items. Committee reports. And I know, and we're not going to go right away to Ashley and Inga, but I know they have fantastical things to talk about today.
Why? Why do we have to wait?
There's been a request from councilperson Clark that Inga and Ashley would go first and share their extravaganza's today. I can't believe you're back already, but go ahead.
I'll go then for us. So today, Inga and I traveled up to Lambeau Field in Green Bay to collect a $5,000 check that we received from the Green Bay Packers Foundation. This money is for our Story Gardens project that we've been working very hard on since 2017. But this money is going towards two sets of concrete chess tables that will be outside in our Story Garden space. And of course, we'll use it, community members can use it at any time. We'll have chess and checker pieces or game sets available for checkout at the library. We'll use it for programming. So we are very, very excited and very thankful to the Green Bay Packer Foundation for like for this grant. And it was quite fun. Inga and I got a picture with Leroy with Leroy Butler. And we listened to Mark Murphy speak. And yeah, it was great.
That's awesome. And thank you because you put in a lot of hard work you guys did to to earn that grant and well deserved and a great thing for our community to have.
Yes, and we're hoping to install them next spring.
And Ashley, I'm so grateful that my input was considered about making them wheelchair accessible. It'll be a lot of fun to come and play chess with someone.
Yes, yeah, of course.
We're gonna sign Howie up for a chess tournament.
Yeah.
Anything else from the library, Ashley?
Um, yes, we do have our Friends of the Milton Public Library book sale going on during the month of November during library hours. So come in and to the lower level and take a look at all the books that we have. And then the $2 bag sale will be the last three days of the month. And become my friend while you're at it.
That's awesome. Thanks. Any other committee reports? Did Park speak? Historic Pres- oh, Library Board Matt, I guess you've covered that for the most part. Did Historic Preservation meet?
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Any any other meetings that I may have missed? Okay, so Inga, did you want to say something?
I don't think so. I was just really happy to go with Ashley up to Lambeau Field today, and it was a nice experience. And I'm excited to continue to see the Story Gardens project move forward.
Me too. Me too. All right. So we've covered committee reports. Ashley and Inga have given staff reports. Chief? Chief Scott? Is that like a timeout? Am I supposed to go to somebody else?
I have so many windows open right now. I need to find where I could unmute. I don't think I have any staff reports. All is going well. Both of our academy attendees are are passing their, I guess, for lack of a better term, midterms. They're both still on track to graduate in December. So we're really pleased about that. Things are going well. That's all I have to say for tonight.
Great. Mark E.
I don't have.
Or gee, did you want Howie to just say at all?
No, I don't. I don't have much to add other than what we've talked about already. And weeks to go with the lead program, lead service line program, they'll be wrapping up. About it.
Okay. Jenny?
I do not have anything to report at this point, but I again have nothing even close to as exciting as Ashley and Inga. So.
I know it's so hard to follow them, but Linda made me do it. All right. Kelsey, do you have anything that you would like to report?
So just working on training and transitioning things. So.
All right. Excellent. First comment. Go ahead. Go, Kelsey. And who else? Who else? Who else? Howie? I expect you to speak for at least five minutes straight.
If you really want me to.
Go over every park, give us an update on every park, every street, how many leaves you've collected, the weather report, the condition of all your vehicles.
Let's see. Parks, let's see, we had a, well, the parks bathrooms are closed to most people. We did have one person somehow get in to one of them today, but it's kind of the general home adventure, what happens in parks. But they're all closed. Except Veterans is going to be open on Veterans Day because they're having their ceremony at 10:30. So we're going to open the bathrooms up for that one. The rest of them are all closed though. So they're just going to keep collecting leaves until it snows. They're just gonna keep collecting leaves until it snows, so, cause they're falling late, but, um. And, um, for snow, not the popular thing, but they did try the brine truck out today. Just to make sure it works and they did their routes just to check it out, so. Anyways, other than that, that is. Probably most of the. Just winter and fall stuff, so.
Is there anything you're leaving out? Do you have a final report you're gonna leave with staff on, uh? A list of things yet to do this year?
Oh, I, I wrote them a whole book, yeah.
Alright.
What, ninety-seven things, Mark, or something like that, yeah.
Pretty close.
Always to-do list?
Yep.
Alright, well, are, are you sure there's nothing else? This is your last report?
I don't know, let's see, um. Well, what else, what else would you like to hear?
Are you going deer hunting? Like, I can't believe you're just up and leaving us in the middle of November. Before, we haven't even gotten snow or anything? Are you sure? Are you sure you want this to be your last meeting?
Well, you know, um. You, you're, you're supposed to leave when things are good, so.
They better be good, Howie, we're calling you right back up.
Yeah, so, no, I think things will go pretty good, so. You got a, a really good staff down here. I got lucky enough to work with a really good staff, so. That's, you know, fantastic staff all the time and. You know, what the heck. There's a. Not really any reason to be sad about last meeting because when you get to leave when you want to and things are good, that's always best, so.
Well, as long as you're happy, Howie, as long as you're happy.
Been here quite a while, so, you know, let's see, has added up, six mayors. Thirty-two councils, um. Five police chiefs, seven city clerks and four engineering firms adds up to a lot of different people. Over a hundred seasonals or more. And the odd part is that, uh, some of those seasonals are now in their fifties, so. When you think they're kids, they're not kids anymore, so. Actually coached Mark in Little League too, so.
Yeah, look at that old man.
Yeah. Anyways, no, I, it thinks, things are going good, so, you know, I mean. I think the guys did really well. Getting through all the COVID and all the other stuff and. You know, and like, like I said, the parks are in a good situation and capital stuff's going good, so. I mean, you gotta remember when I started here, we didn't even collect brush up in the Greens subdivision, cause there weren't any trees. Big enough to have. Branches, so, so that's been a while, so.
A lot of changes have taken place over the past thirty years, haven't they?
Yeah, McKeon was the edge of town, so. Yeah, Pigly Wiggly was the oats field when I started, so. So there's been a few things going on, so.
And you have adapted very well.
I've tried, yeah.
Changes forever ongoing, isn't it?
I might sleep for a while next week, so.
I don't even wanna hear about it. I think we should all be knocking on Howie's door at 6:00 AM with a cup of coffee or something, just to make sure he's okay. We'll do welfare checks. We'll each take a turn during a welfare check on you next week.
Tell the guys, I may call them out of habit just at midnight when it snows, just to see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Al?
Kinda gave, uh, update, the last two items are really what, what we've been working on a lot at City Hall Budget and then Fire Department, but. You know, it's coming to that time of year. To finish those things up, so that's exciting, but. Um, you know, wanted to just kind of, you know, Howie did a great job of kind of explaining. You know, what, what all he's done in his, his thirty-one years and three hundred and sixty-three days, but I think. What can never really be stated is the impact that he's had on the community, you know, I mean, I've only worked with Howie for seven years. But, you know, I think I told Howie this story one time, when I first moved to the city of Milton in twenty twelve. Uh, my wife's family is from Milton, so we, we had a Christmas party at our house and we played this little game. Uh, where we, you know, it was Milton trivia and they're all old time Milton Wildcats and all that stuff and. When I first moved into the house, I kept, you know, I'd have questions about things on my property. And Lussey's uncle Steve Agnew, many of you know, lives down the street and he'd say, oh, just call Howie. Oh, just call Howie, just call Howie, and I had no idea who Howie was. You know, I just, I didn't, I didn't know. Um, but we had this Milton trivia co- co- contest and, and, you know, a lot of these folks hadn't lived in the city of Milton for years, years and years and years. And one of the questions was, who's the Director of Public Works for the city of Milton? And the vast majority of them knew, oh, it's Howard Robinson. I mean, that's the kind of impact that he's had. I mean, he, everybody in the community knows him, um, they respect him. He's done a wonderful job of creating. You know, just a great community and, and, and like it said in the resolution. You know, he did that for his family, but he did it for all of us, you know, raising in a family here and grandkids and kids and coach and. Uh, you know, all the things that he's done for, for athletics, it's, it's really just an amazing legacy that he's left and. There is no way you can explain to the average citizen. Um, the debt of gratitude that they really do owe Howie without even knowing it. I mean, every time you turn your faucet on, the water's clean. Now, it takes, it takes a big group of people to make sure that happened, but Howie was the guy at the top. You know, every time, you know, it snowed and the plow, the streets were plowed. It takes a lot of people to do that, but Howie was the guy who was, you know, putting together those plow routes and making sure he had the right people on the, on, on the job and. And, you know, making sure that things were done appropriately. He is a model public servant and. It's, it's too hard to, uh, put it all into words and, and we all owe him a debt of gratitude. I've enjoyed working with him immensely over the last seven years. I know he will be missed tremendously, not only in our organization, but in our community. I know he's not leaving. Um, I told him that I would send him every team building on Wednesday morning afterwards, just to see if he could stay in touch, but. It really is an impressive amount and he's such a good-natured, honest. Uh, person that has a tremendous amount of integrity and he's, he's a model public servant. And, and I, I know, uh, thus, uh, all of us who work in our careers in public service don't wanna be just reduced to a public servant, but. You know, it's, it's that, it's that. Public service. Based in, in. Wanting to do the best that makes. Things work so well and especially at the local government level. Howie's not here just collecting a paycheck for the last thirty-one years. Howie's not here, you know, clocking out at three-thirty and going home and never thinking about work again. Uh, I mean, Howie has lived this and, and, uh, and, and it's, it shows in our community. When we hear the wonderful things about our community, our parks. How beautiful it is when people move in here and they say, oh my gosh, I can't believe you guys have all this stuff. A lot of that's because of Howie Robinson and that's not gonna be forgotten, at least by any of us anytime soon, and I hope it's not forgotten by the community.
Are you crying yet, Howie?
No, no, cause.
We need to try harder.
Yeah.
There's no reason to be sad when things are going well. And it, it's kinda like I told Al when I talked about retirement, there is a certain time when you have to figure out. That it is kind of the time to stop and that's usually when things are good. I think I told him, it's kinda like. You don't wanna be that person at the card game. When it's the last game of the night and everybody's in a good mood. And you go, well, let's do one more game and everybody goes, oh, really? You know, because, you know, there's just a time you have to pick when it's time to stop, so, you know, and. Like you said, you know, you, the one thing about this is you do have to have. A sense of humor, a little bit about a lot of the stuff. And. You know, and, and that not everybody can have their way all the time, so, but it does take a lot of, uh. And people really just want to, uh. A lot of times they just wanna answer or a solution. And like I said, we got twelve hundred pages in that ordinance book. And you just take the time to help them find what they can almost get, you know. At, at least it helps them feel good, you know, cause they, it's, you don't usually get a hundred percent, but they can get pretty close to ninety percent of what they want, so. So it just, you know, and, you know, being around quite a bit. And people are generally in the whole town are, are usually really, really nice. You know, there's always a few times when somebody's crabby, but. You know, you just get over it, you just go to the next time, you see them the next time, you just start right over. And you go the next, the next thing's a new day and I think they like that, so. So that's just kinda the way to approach it, just, you know, everything's different and. Like we find out every day at the public works, every day is a new adventure, so.
So you're telling us we can't hold grudges, is that what you're saying?
It doesn't do any good. And when you don't, I think people are surprised, you know, sometimes because, cause they worry and it's like. You know, they're, you know, they are. Like I said, sometimes they're just bad days for people, but, and everybody kinda likes to have their way all the time, but. It just can't happen and you find something for them that's just as good and they're happy, but, uh. You know, so I just, I don't know, that's just, yeah, the grudges aren't a good thing. It doesn't do you ever any good, so. And the public works guys know that too, you know, they. I mean, they're kinda, and I'd say almost like your modern day cowboys, you know, they're always there. They're reliable. They don't talk a lot, um, and, and every time you drive by in that big yellow truck, every kid in town wants to be on it with them, so. So anyways, you know, I don't know, things have been good and things are gonna go good in the future, so.
Thanks, Howie. Alright, so our team building, which Al, I will, um, count as you already have done it, um.
Didn't see that email, uh, until, until a few moments ago, once I, I think you made that comment, so. Yeah, I'm covered.
You're covered, so, um, and this is one of those rare moments when I actually give you guys some time to think about something. So I'm just gonna elaborate a little bit more. So it's all about Howie. Tonight, and Howie doesn't have to say anything, he gets to just listen. So. You can answer one of these questions. What will you miss about Howie? What will you, or what will you never forget? Or what has Howie meant to you?
I'll, I'll go with the obvious one, uh. Kind of misses encyclopedic knowledge. Of, uh, the Milton community, uh, you know, just what. Uh, Al was talking about, um. The idea of, uh, if nobody else knows, ask Howie, cause he's. Probably been there or knows how it got to be the way it got to be.
Thanks, Bill. Teresa?
Uh, miss stories about his grandchildren. Enjoy those, he's got some good kids.
Thanks. Linda?
Well, Bill took mine, I was gonna say his encyclopedic mind. But I, I do have to say that one of the things that I think we're all gonna miss is his ability to predict the snow.
Yeah. For sure.
We can put him on the agenda every so often. Larry?
Yeah, um. Patience and perseverance, uh, uh, patience with, um, me. Many times patience with, uh. His counsel and other people who have questions and especially the residents. Uh, Howie just has a way about him that. Yes, this is how it is and I, I know you're upset, but. Let's, let's look at the ordinances or let's figure this out. And that perseverance is just, you know, that we got a problem in the city somewhere that relates to. My work and I'm gonna try to find a solution. And brings that back to the city council and to the administration, so. Patience and perseverance and a wonderful sense of humor.
So I'll, I'll go. Um, I'll always remember in twenty fourteen when Howie was one of the volunteers to help build the Crossridge Park Playground. And I'm gonna share this picture, cause I was looking for some for the Gazette to, today and yesterday, so this is. A couple of the volunteers that we had from the twenty fourteen Crossridge Park Playground build. It was the hottest day of twenty fourteen. And then a storm came in and it was, it was just a chaotic day in general. We had about fifty volunteers and. Howie was there right away in the morning and stuck it out to the end, so I really appreciated his support for the project and helping out that day and. Sticking it out with us even through the thunderstorms and everything else that happened that day.
Thanks, Inga. I will go next, um. I appreciate so much how. Um, and the different areas that Howie was involved with or were interested in. He, you always knew that he cared about it, so like when my son was playing, whatever he was playing, I don't know if it was softball or baseball, it's probably baseball or. Or, you know, Howie would, you know, talk to me about it or he'd say, how's he doing or, you know, um, you always knew that, that. Um, Howie cared. And he was sincere and even when I would hear that Howie might be mad at me about something. I never knew it, cause he was always nice to me, even when I think he was mad at me, he was always caring and kind to me. He might have been cussing me out behind my back, but. I'm not holding a grudge. And, and I'm not even the longest mayor, I have to get elected another term, right, to be the longest mayor to serve?
I'll go, so I actually applied to work at DPW when I was nineteen for a summer job. Um, and, uh, at the time Uncle Herb was working for the city and he told me that Howie was wondering why I would ever want to. Work for DPW, so although I've never worked for you, Howie, I'm glad I worked with you as a city employee.
Jenny?
Uh, so Howie, I will always remember for his patience with me, um, and his laugh, because no matter. How confused I was in this short, a period of time, um, he always was like, it's okay, we'll get it, and so I appreciate that, but on another note. I will say that, um, he is part of the reason that I am here. Because, uh, the person who told me about this position and, uh, was actually my mom and my, he. Works, my stepfather Glenn, it reps with Howie and said. Uh, well, mostly employees must be amazing because Howie works there, so I will always remember that.
No. Oh, Kelsey, yay, go ahead.
It's only been a couple of weeks, but what I'm gathering is that I am going to miss having the opportunity to work with Howie.
We'll send you over to his house when he's not answering his phone and we need an answer.
So I, I'm gonna repeat some of the others, the answers is what I was thinking too. Um, well, first I appreciate his really great advice tonight about grudges, cause they're not worth it, so I think that's a fantastic thing to remember. And two, um. When, when you need an answer to something and you know you can find it somewhere. And you know it will take you a lot of time, but instead you can just call somebody and ask them. Um, Howie was that personal a lot of times, so that's one of the things I'm gonna miss.
I'm gonna miss his answers to team building.
He really, I would say was a, a high achiever on team building. Maybe it drove him to early retirement, but he did well. Is it the marks? Oh, Mark, Mark S, he beat you out, Mark E.
Well, Howie, what I appreciate is what I term your relaxed professionalism, uh, in dealing with you over the years. Your demeanor is. Casual. But professional, when I dealt with you, I, we were able to communicate very well. And, uh, we were able to work towards solutions together. And you. As I say, you did it in a very modest manner, but I knew that in working with you, you knew what you were talking about. And you had the advantage of, of, uh. Longevity and the perspective that goes with it. And after a while, you just come to appreciate that and that was, that was very helpful to me. And I think that's one of the secrets to. The success that you've, you've had there in terms of how you approach your, your, uh. Your job and I'd say. I'd say it was really more, more than the job, and I think you, you treat it as a profession. And, and so I, I would consider you a, a fellow professional and so I, I appreciate working with you. And you do have, leave people behind that are gonna be doing a good job as well, but certainly we'll all, all miss your approach and. Just, uh, getting to know you a little bit, so, thank you, Howie.
Thanks.
So I'll miss a lot. I haven't known Howie in a long time. I'll miss his perspective. His calm. I just. I'm sorry, Howie, you do me a lot to me.
Ten hours studying with a scrum.
Mark, you're gonna make me cry now. We're all gonna be crying at the end of this.
That was my goal.
Everybody saw a lot of good things, and it's all true.
You've meant so much to so many people, and you will continue to, because I just, unless you change your number, um, I just can't imagine us not calling you routinely. I have a list of people that I'm going to have you mediate. And the impact that you've had on your staff and everybody that has been able to work with you. And, um, we will miss you. We will miss you on Zoom meetings, although I think we could do a cutout and just have a little square for you.
Oh, my gosh, can we have a cardboard cutout of Howie?
Yeah.
In every department?
Why not?
I would love that.
That would be great.
Hey, Howie, I, I think you're still in the office, and Mark, you are too, maybe Howie should go, go give Mark a hug.
Or a beer, I don't know.
I'm like eight years old.
The one thing that I know, I, I will add toward, to the end, is a bit of levity, is, is I know that even after Howie retires, he's still gonna stay in the city of Milton, which means there's a high probability he will continue to be a very bad influence on my children when I run into him.
Yeah, that's right.
Like, we were at Ace Hardware, and Howie was in line behind us, and my oldest son wanted a sucker, and I said, no. And Howie guilted me, and kind of like almost tagged Grant on, like, oh, come on, give him a sucker, come on, here, Grant, pick this one out. That'll probably still continue when I run into him through town, you know, so, be a bad influence on my kids.
We, on that cardboard cutout, we could put a little, uh, sign that says, what would Howie do?
Yeah.
We could, we could put a cutout of him out on North Janesville to slow the traffic down.
Yeah, right in front of my house, perfect.
We could be, we could have a little bubble, saying, Howie sees how fast you're going.
Yeah.
Oh, Howie.
Well, well, thank you, everybody, for all your nice comments, and so, so, but, uh, you know, there, there just comes a time, like I told Al, it's time to put the cards away and go home, so. So anyways, thanks, everybody.
And we're all happy for you that you are doing this, Howie. Very happy. We're just gonna miss you.
Good job, everyone, on team building. Thank you. Thank you for this. Thank you, Howie. So our next meeting with a coward cardboard cutout of Howie, we know, November sixteenth.
We do have a closed session still.
I know, I know we do, I know, I'm not gonna screw it up so much.
She is following the agenda.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, that was, I did that, I'm the one who made that, that's my fault.
No, um, so, Ryan?
Mark S, is that, uh, section correct?
Close, just dropped the second sub E.
Oh, we, we did.
They did.
On the online, you must have printed it off right away, yeah, yeah.
In that case, consideration of emotion can be in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five subsection one, subsection E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding city of Milton fire and EMS service provisions.
Second. Out those in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? That was unanimous? Back in open session? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.